It's a possible move up front. This incredibly beautiful room, I'm thrilled to be here. Everyone said it's too big, it's too big. I said this room is never too big. Any chance I get the opportunity to sit in this gorgeous facility that's opened up last year, I'll take advantage of it. I want to thank everybody at Hudson Hall, at the historic Hudson Opera House for allowing us to have this venue. Afterwards, we're having dinners and cocktails and I'll do a little song and dance on stage. That would be exciting. No, they're set up for a variety of events that are taking place tomorrow and over the weekend. So, I wanted it was just a small little group. I very purposely called this a conversation because that's what I want to have happen tonight. You're not going to get any political speech from me. It's really a chance, hopefully a chance, and I said it, a conversation, that hopefully we both walk out of here and we've learned something new. And I learned something new every day as being your mayor. I thank you very much for being here on this rather cold end of February, thankfully. March is tomorrow and March is always the beginning of this... I hear a little bit of promise of spring. I wouldn't say it's the start of spring. That happens in what day of March is spring? Eighteenth?
Twenty-third.
Oh, that makes sense. I'm sorry?
It's the nineteenth this year.
Nineteenth this year, alright. And she'll publish that. So, I really am thrilled that you all did show up on this cold night. I had no idea what to expect, other than I expect a... Really, this is Hudson, so I know people have things on their mind, I know people have comments, which is going to be very good for me. First of all, I cannot thank all of you enough for having had the opportunity to be your mayor for the past fourteen months. It has been... Thank you very much. It has been one of the most satisfying and gratifying experiences of my life, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart. And I've been lucky to have done some what I thought were incredible things, but being able to serve a community and represent a community and work with both the leaders and just the general population is really an exciting adventure almost every day. And it's... Every day is a challenge, and I will say that as gratifying is from the very small to what I consider the very large, they're all very important to me. I learn something new every day, and I really mean that. And I hopefully some every day I meet somebody new, and that's very important as well, whether it's a person living in Hudson that I never had the opportunity to meet, or someone wanting to come to Hudson to open up a business, or someone has a great plan for a park, or someone has a great plan for some sort of interesting technological thing. It's an exciting thing, and I am thrilled and I thank all of you for giving me this opportunity to serve you. It's been... It's real pleasure. And I look forward to continuing for the next, for the rest of this year. I have had, and the cities have, we've all had, I think, some really good accomplishments, you know, and I'm not your typical... Well, I hate to say this, your typical politician. I grew up to be something else, but I am thrilled to be a politician now, and I am a politician, but I'm not one to usually try to my chest too much. I just want to get things done. So, some of the criticisms that I've heard about me, and I take it, listen, I'll listen to people, you know, Ricky, don't... We don't know enough about what you've done, what you're doing, what's going on, and I take responsibility for that, but I'm not my own best cheerleader. I think I'm a great cheerleader for Hudson on a daily basis, from my retail and my real estate experience, and I'm always out touting this great community. And if you know me from Facebook, the only thing I ever post on Facebook is a great article was written about Hudson, this important thing. You know, really celebrating our community, and that's one of the great joys of being your mayor as well, is celebrating it with the people here and new people that are considering coming here, and visitors to Hudson. And gracious, we've had lots of visitors to Hudson. Can you imagine, you know, we've... I don't know how long all of you have lived here, but several years ago, even six years ago, January, February, dead months. And if you look at these weekends throughout the winter now, it's impossible to find a parking spot. And that is incredible, you know, cafes, restaurants, stores, I don't want to say museums. You know, everything is very full, and people are coming to Hudson. Hudson has been discovered, which brings a lot of challenges, and I'm not denying that we have challenges associated with the incredible tourism economy that is taking place. But those challenges, I think, we're all looking at, we're trying to come up with some answers. Now, my promise tonight is not to talk my little head off. It is really to engage in a conversation with the people sitting here. And no, I'm not... I was kidding, we're not going to have food or anything here. I just... That would be kind of fun, though. Maybe the next time, maybe at political event. But it's really a chance for me to listen to you, if you have some comments, you know, or some questions. It's just a great opportunity for me to learn, and it's a great opportunity for me to hear some maybe things that I didn't, I'm not been doing so good in the past year, or things that you like, or things that you'd like to see. So, please, don't be hesitant to really speak your mind. I just ask that all of us be polite, keep it pleasant, and civil. That's incredibly important to me. And it's... And I think that we can talk about the most difficult and heaviest of circumstances in a very pleasant, productive way, hopefully. I just ask that you kindly give me your name when you stand up and ask a question, and the ward you live in, or if you don't live in a ward, what your association is with the community. You may be involved in a business, you may be here staying in one of our hotels or ends overnight, you just... This became your entertainment, but please just give me an idea of what, of where you're from and what you're doing. And with that said, I'd just like to start going, you know, and start letting you all have a say. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Hi. My name is... Should I talk to you, or should I...
You can talk. You can twirl around.
My name is Annick De Velferri, and I live in the first ward. And my question, comment, was based on one of the last posts on Gossips about the Tourism Board meeting. And there was some question about whether they were supposed to be paying for these parades that the town is to pay for, and it's like a $20,000 amount, and it's all these different parades, I could list them, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
And there was some discussion within this group about whether they should pay for that or not, and it seemed to me, I know, I probably don't know all the facts, but an obvious thing that they should pay for that is, and they're using the lodging tax for their, for this committee or whatever, the Tourism Board. It seems like the obvious thing that they should pay for that, and I wanted to know if you had any comments about that.
Sure. Essentially, two years ago, the city of Hudson adapted in...
Ricky, can you please repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking about the Tourism Board and a post that was done on Gossips of Rivertown this week regarding a recent meeting with the Tourism Board, how to spend the money. And during that meeting, there... Trying to remember this, because... During that meeting, there was a conversation that some of the old money that was allocated previous years towards parades and other events, it was always $20,000 in the Arts, Entertainment and Tourism Committee, that they allocated towards various parades and events throughout the city. And as part of the last Tourism Committee meeting, I wasn't there, so I can't say exactly what was said, there was a conversation, I think, about, from what I've read, about utilizing some of their money that they get from the city to sponsor those events. Two years ago or so, the city of Hudson passed a lodging tax, and it was worked out with various members of the, obviously, the Common Council who put it together at that time, and members of the lodging community. And the lodging community was, I guess, somewhat aggressively involved in the beginning. They were, because we were going to be setting a new tax on them. And it was a tax for hotels, bed and breakfast, and Airbnbs, anything that offered a, you know, a short-term rental. And we can talk about short-term rentals later on. But the tax, the law specifically said that half of the lot, half of the monies collected would go towards this committee, the Tourism Committee. And very specifically in that law, that those monies would be utilized towards marketing. And that, and so, this is a relatively new organization. They started up in January of this, of this last year, in 2018, with a brand-new committee. It's headed up by Rich Bell, who's extremely capable young man. But, you know, and I knew there would be, I appointed five people to Common Council, appointed five people to this committee. We knew all along that they had to get their feet wet, they had to make some decisions on how they wanted to function as an organization. And so, you know, I think we've all given them a lot, you know, some freedom and some lot of air to really establish which direction they want to go. At the same time, there's been a lot of conversation about how that money should actually be used. Does it, does the city of Hudson require a major marketing campaign? You know, I think everyone has these opinions, you know, I certainly have my opinions, but I have to say, we have a law that says it should go towards marketing. No, I personally don't think, you know, that we need to see logo, billboards in New York City, or up and down, you know, 87, visit Hudson. Hudson's extremely lucky. We get people coming here by word of mouth, by great publicity, by, because of the talented and people that are in this room and throughout our whole community, people love Hudson, they enjoy coming here. So, I think that there's two things that have to happen. I think that this board has got to wrestle with, you know, how they want to spend that money. And as far as I'm concerned, marketing can be a lot of different things, very loosely identified. I look at, and this is a little bit of a bully pulpit, but that comes with the mayor, that possibly, you know, marketing can be anything that enhances a tourist or a visitor to the city of Hudson experience when they're here. So, that could mean anything from new trash cans to, you know, different lights, to variety of different things, or maybe doing some of the things that they were talking about, you know. But that, and the other thing to remember, that maybe that law should, could be revised. And that's a conversation that I think will be taking place, so that the money is not just towards marketing. Because, again, I would use marketing very loosely, and if you use it loosely, it can be a lot of different things. And again, something that enhances both us as residents in Hudson and any visitor coming to Hudson. How's that?
So, the parades might be one of their...
I can't tell you. That's the committee's decision. That's a possibility, you know, and I think in a loosely defined marketing, that's a big possibility. But that would be, that would be that committee's decision.
But the city's no longer paying for that, the parades?
No.
So, that's a problem.
Well, the city never fully paid for parades. We gave, we gave X amount of money to offset some of the things.
Right. What parade is she coming to?
We have three, there's, well, there's like...
I'll give you a list if you want.
I'm aware.
Thirteen events. Flag Day Parade, the Pride Parade, the Halloween Parade, Bangladeshi, Black Arts and Cultural Weekend.
Winter Walk?
Winter Walk was, is a big recipient, so I think there were twelve or fifteen. It's changed over the years. And very small events, like, you know, $500 for the, my little children's parade, so it's changed over the years. But that would be, that's a consideration for the committee. And this is the beauty of Hudson and small city and government, you know, from, you can go to any of these committee meetings and put your two cents in, and I really strongly suggest, one of the great things that are common, one of the good things that the Common Council did, and Tom Di Pietro, who I think I saw come in, hello, Tom, you know, that they're allowing citizens to be on the Common Council committees now. So, you know, I encourage you to engage yourself if you have, if you have concerns like that, or you'd like to see money spent like that, to attend that next Tourism Board, and say, you know, why don't you look at spending some of that money towards that? So, yeah, I think that, I don't know, Jen, it's changed the amount of activities that the $20,000 has supported over the years. Anybody else? Oh, my goodness. Come on. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Adele. I have one concern, a ramp for the park, Promenade Hill Park?
What about it?
Anything want to be done about it, because we need one?
Yes. Adele has been consistently, when I was in Alderman, and a huge advocate for a ramp to Promenade Hill, and that poor ramp has gotten immersed in so many different things. First of all, the city came up with a rough plan to do a temporary ramp that many people decided was not appropriate for the city of Hudson. And so, then they kept, the Common Council allocated, I think, up to, ultimately, like $125,000 to build a new ramp for Promenade Hill.
They had a ramp where they were going to live?
Well, it was actually quite, it incorporated the existing, the existing architectural framework of the entrance to Promenade Hill. It was up the side, and you had to be very careful because of steps and everything else, so they had engineers and architects, and actually, a local, one of our local nonprofits, I think, helped fund it very kindly. And it was a very handsome thing that went up to the side around the Chamber of Commerce offices, and then ultimately entered into, into, hang on, into Promenade, up to Promenade Hill. At that same, after we, everybody was happy and warm and cozy about, this is a good design, it's expensive, you know, it's maybe a lot of money for what it is, but it was going to serve this very important purpose, that we found out it could not be built engineering-wise because of massive amounts of electrical con ed that went back and forth underneath it. At the same time, Adele, Adele's one of my favorite people, I love her last name, she says Armour, and I say Armor. At the same time, the city was awarded, began the DRI process, and we began putting together applications for the DRI process. And one of the major applications for the DRI grant was a complete renovation of Promenade Hill. So, that got funded by the $10 million that we're getting from the state of New York. Now, that's not going to mean you're going to get a ramp immediately, and I'm sorry about that, but that will be, the ramp will be incorporated into a complete new design for Promenade Hill, which is very exciting, and ties into the whole Front Street development that will be happening through the DRI. So, you will get your ramp, hopefully in the next, it's not going to be as fast, and I know, and I know, and I sat in a meeting in Providence Hall, and I told her we were doing everything, and I promised her that that last ramp was going to happen, and now she's hearing another story.
I've been hearing another story since 95.
Well, I hope it, with everything in place, we may have it in the next two years. That, or it may be three years, because we have, that's one of the more complicated design issues of a DRI.
Why you just can't put a simple ramp there? Nothing simple. Yes, it is.
Well, that was the problem, because it's...
When you look at these houses, wait a minute, excuse me. When you look at the houses, and people got these little ramps, there's a ramp right second and Warren Street, where you built a ramp to go to the house. Just a simple ramp. You don't need to polish it up just for the ramp. Well, it doesn't cost millions of dollars either.
Well, you're going to get a beautiful ramp, and I hear you loud and clearly.
It's more about the park than it is the ramp.
No, it's about, it's about the whole thing, Adele, and the ramp has been a consistent conversation since 95. But, you know, the intention is to have a great ramp that we're all proud of incorporated into a new park for the...
So, Rick, you're saying that's a guarantee within three years?
I can't say anything's a guarantee, that's the last thing I'm going to say.
But it guarantees...
But it's certainly been, the money's been allocated for. We start the design, the engineering, and all those aspects of it very immediately. And that's part of a bigger conversation about the DRI, if you want to get into it, if anybody's interested about what's going on with the DRI. And I'll be glad to fill you in as much as we can. But Adele, you know, and I'm sorry, and I, we've laughed about it, we've talked about it. I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing it up, you know, and I know you've spoken to your older people in the past, supervisors, and I looked at you in the eye, because we thought we had that ramp going, and you said, well, that $100,000 was expensive, but now it's part of a million-plus project. But it's going to be a beautiful, you know, it should be, it should be something that the entire community's going to be very proud of at the end of the day.
I would be proud just to be able to see people that have wheelchairs, walkers, baby carriage, able to go up into the park. When Co-ART was down there, I worked there, and there was a lot of the residents and people there wanting to go up in the park, but they couldn't.
I understand.
I'm more concerned about them than I am a beautification of a park.
Well, the ramp is part, it's not a beautification, well, that's part of it, but it's part of it is a ramp, and that's part of it. So, in order, the decision was, don't something, don't do something temporary, do it right and do it long-term.
Take you a long time, or maybe?
95?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Could you bring us up to date on the DRI?
Yes. The DRI, for everyone who may not know about the DRI, the DRI is Downtown Revitalization Initiative that the governor started three years ago. I think we've gone through three phases of it. Hudson was elected in the second year of the DRI to receive a $10 million grant from the state of New York. Part of the application process was defining a specific area within each community, and with that community, specific projects that would enhance the residential, the residents' experience of living in that town. It's been very, very different community by community by community. Hudson, part of their DRI application, I think initially, submitted 23 potential, potential projects as part of the application. The governor awarded it to us in 2016. God, the years get weird. In 2016?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? No.
Sixteen.
You're right. And then the city put together a very large committee, working committee, that was facilitated by an outside company that does these things. It was a six-plus-month process of going through meeting after meeting with as much public involvement as possible, ultimately narrowing it down to, I believe, maybe sixteen, and don't hold any of these numbers specifically, sixteen projects, of which thirteen ultimately were funded by the governor and the governor's office. Out of those thirteen projects, six of those are city projects. And that includes a streetscape for all of Front Street, from the North Bay to the South Bay, and that includes sidewalks, and from below Third, and then below Second Street to Front Street. Sidewalks, lighting, signage, a really a new way of looking at, you know, and I'd say some great infrastructural changes for an element or a portion of this community that's kind of been overlooked over the years. And especially if you go into the South Bay, when you get into Basilica and entering into that grade-level crossing, it's kind of like, it's always been the Wild, Wild West to me down there. So, I'm thrilled, you know, that's a major part of it. Another part of it's the Promenade Hill, and I'm going to call it the Adele Ramp from now on. The Adele Ramp at Promenade Hill. And that's a secondary component of this city project. The third is a re, a small redo of Figari, and that will be determined, we know what gets, what gets in demolition and plans, probably for a small, simple park for the city of Hudson, celebrating its past and its history. The other two are the Dunn Warehouse. The Dunn Warehouse is, are certainly now one of the most historic buildings, and the only building of its ilk left in Hudson right on the river. That's something that I've been involved with for, I think, about four years now, so I'm thrilled that that got a million dollars, and that will probably, I mean, there's millions of ideas. We've had several meetings about what Dunn Warehouse can be. But the million dollars is really set aside to shore it up, to stabilize it, and to repoint bricks, and make sure that that building does not deteriorate anymore, because it's a real treasure of our community. And the last one is...
Cross Street.
Cross Street. And Cross Street is down, as you know, to, I'm sorry?
Staircase between...
Yeah, I know what it is. Cross Street is an old staircase that goes between Allen Street and Cross Street to, right by where the New Wick Hotel is. And that's going to be a nice, a nice new vision of getting access down to what potentially is a brand-new neighborhood for the city of Hudson. And we all, we've gone through, we have the CAS Warehouse down there, we have the New Wick Hotel, which is an incredible, I think, a great new addition to the city of Hudson. We have a couple of historic buildings that we'd love to see taken care of. So, that represents really one of the last areas that we can develop as a city that we own. So, that's, that's, those are the five projects for the city of Hudson. One of the, you know, it's interesting, because during the whole DRI process, Sheena Salvino, who was head of the HDC, and she has her master's in economic development and planning, or planning, and, is it planning or economic development?
Planning.
Planning. And Sheena, you know, very involved in HDC and HCDPA, and worked very closely with the Common Council and other people regarding grants. We all assumed that Sheena would be implementing this and overseeing this, and Sheena, you know, Sheena decided in this past summer that she was going to fall in love and move away out of Hudson. So, that kind of put us in, we had to rethink how we were going to facilitate this. So, I couldn't be happier to announce that we put together a committee, a DRI committee, made up of myself, our Common Council president, the city treasurer, our director, our plan, head of the planning, excuse me, the planning board for the city of Hudson, and our city attorney, and we were able to put out an RFP. We had, I think, some very qualified people contact us that they were interested, and two weeks ago, we signed a contract with a company that's coming in to facilitate the administration of the DRI. And you have to understand, you're dealing with New York State, Department of State, and Empire State Development, the massive work of paperwork and talks, and then ultimately public hearings, and letting the public see and hear what we're doing, you know, we don't really have the wherewithal at City Hall. So, we have an outside organization that's being funded by the money from DRI to come in and completely take charge of this entire program. So, I think that we all kind of had a nice relief that this is going to happen. That was very concerning to me, and I think other people. So, I'm very proud and excited that we've hired a company called Chason that will be taking charge. But doesn't mean that we won't be involved, we meet every week, they report to us every week, and then, you know, as the process goes along, the public will be requested to be engaged in, whether it's design, whether you like the concepts, variety of different things. So, this DRI is not, you know, I think the easiest thing was winning the money. The second most difficult thing was going through months and months of, if anybody went to those meetings, you know what I'm talking about, and deciding about it, and the most difficult is implementing, and that's always the case. And you, and we want to make sure that it's done, that we're all proud of it. And so, that's, that's the update on the DRI. We are now getting heavy into it with, with both with the state of New York, with our local company, and really starting to look at some contracts, probably, about how we'll be doing some of this with the Department of State and Empire State Development. So, it's exciting, it's very exciting. I am, I'm thrilled about the DRI. DRI, you know, it got off on some crazy, you know, it's like, this is going to change the town. $10 million at the end of the day is not a huge amount of money in a town like this. But as I said, you know, and I keep saying it, this is one chance for some much-needed infrastructure in an overlooked part of our community. Now, there are other private projects that the city is not involved with, and that's anything from a Kite's Nest to a program that you may have recently heard about through the Hudson Housing Authority, that they received $800,000 to do a forty-unit apartment across the street. Now, that's changing into other things, it's a major conversation going on. Some work at Basilica, there's other, a couple of other private projects, but the city's not involved in that. That, they work directly with the state, and they can do their own thing. We will be as engaged as we possibly can with the community throughout this entire process. Yes, ma'am?
What about the bridge?
The bridge is, I love the bridge. The bridge was, we closed down the bridge, and, God, Mary Hollenbeck did it, so it might have been 2015, the Ferry Street Bridge was closed down because of safety concerns, and there was not a plan in which to replace it. One of the first things that Mayor Hamilton, or no, I'm sorry, Mayor Martin, did was to put together people. Rob Perry, through the DPW, worked very closely with the Department of Transportation, and the Department of Transportation had some additional monies that they weren't going to spend, and he, we very quickly grabbed that. So, we're now in a four-year process, we're in the second year now of a four, or third year, yeah, we're in the third year now, of a four-year process that will give us a new Ferry Street Bridge. About four months ago, Rob and, Rob Perry from DPW and I did a presentation for the community on the design so far, and so, we're at the design level. And so we're at the design level, it's gone through all the engineering things, and this has been a, it's, we knew all along it was going to be a four-year project, because that's just how the Department of Transportation works, from what I told them. And so the first year, they talked, second year it was engineering, and they got off, and it's a major thing, because they're dealing with Amtrak, with CSX, with the city, you know, all of our needs, and the parks, you know, everybody's involved. So we did see some preliminary designs that we'll be hearing, we should be hearing very quickly from, what the feedback was, because they, the people from Department of Transportation were here, they were very curious, you know, about what Hudson, the Hudsonites thought about the design. It's, it's posted, I think, on the, is it on our website, city website?
It's on the Department of Public Works.
It's on the DPW portion of the cityofhudson.org website. I know the newspapers have talked about it, Carol's certainly put it in Gossips of Rivertown. So the photographs are out there, which is, you know, we had, this first year, thank God for Brandon, we put together a new website, and it's not perfect, but there is a lot of information. Unfortunately, we lost a lot of archive stuff that we will attempt over the years to put back on there. But there is a lot of information there you can go to and find out, whether it's planning board, whether it's something happening at the DPW, you would be able to see the design of the bridge. And, you know, we're now trying to use it as a news system, so if you just log into it, you can see about the fact that revow, I know, we can talk about that in a few minutes, you know, the cities have done through a revow, and that information will be mailed out in the next couple of days, you'll be receiving it probably next week. But there's a lot of information on that website, and it's not perfect, and some people, you know, complain about it every day. But, and I kind of like the old one too, because I could always get what I wanted out of it. But we want this to be a little bit more newsy, a little bit more exciting, a little bit more dynamic, that people will visit, and whether they're visiting Hudson, we'll turn them into Visit Hudson website. So, please, you know, visit cityofhudson.org and give me a call, let me know what you think about it. Come on, this is good citizens of Hudson, there's gotta be some great questions. Yes, ma'am?
Any update on following adding some type of supermarket or theme?
You know, I, we have a new supermarket that's opening up, I think, next week. And it's the first new supermarket, it truly is a supermarket, in Hudson. It's on Second Street between Warren and Union. It is the, I love this, the Rolling Grocer. It was a concept done last year, and it was, it's a, it's a mobile grocery store that goes throughout the entire city. I'm gonna watch this side more. That goes throughout the entire city, and it had a weekly schedule of places that it would stop at, and it offers affordable food. I got a call from them, you know, late fall, saying, "It's getting cold outside, is there a place that we can permanently go?" Fortunately, the city has no place to, you know, for to go. But they have subsequently signed a lease for the old promised neighborhood space, and often called, what is it, the Fish?
Shrimp Box.
Shrimp Box, I thought Fish Bar. The Shrimp Box, and I don't know how that came about either. But they are moving in there, they should be opening up in the next couple of weeks, and they will offer affordable food. And that, I'm excited, because it's a couple of blocks away, and means I don't have to drive out.
Where's the location?
It's Second Street between Union and Warren. You know where Promise Neighborhood used to be?
Closer to Warren.
Yeah, the old driving school?
Yes.
It's right there. And it's not huge, but it will offer affordable foods, and I think it's, the offerings will be much greater than what they had on the Rolling Grocer. But they're, I think they're continuing to call it the Rolling Grocer, which is fine. I asked them what their plans were for the, for the Rolling Grocer, the actual vehicle, and they said it's going to be more county-oriented now, through the summer months, that they can go out and visit other areas of the county that would like to have access to affordable food. And I think we all want access to affordable food. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Rick, good question. I know one of your goals as mayor, on your chalkboard in your office, was to turn the mayor term from two years to four years. And are you still, are you still hoping to do that? How are you doing it? And what's going on?
That is certainly a goal, and it's a big goal of mine, and I was, I was open about that during, during the campaign. I, the timing on that's very, you know, is interesting. I don't want to do it for myself. I'm more than happy to be mayor for four years. It is my goal, running again and being re-elected, and, you know, then I would put together a referendum, because it is a referendum, it is a, it is a citywide vote, that would change the mayor to a four-year position, and probably a two, nothing more, maybe no more than two terms. But that's a conversation that I will have with a lot of different people. Whether other city officials, you know, that's required, that's another conversation. But I'm specifically looking at the mayor, the need for a four-year term, because it's very difficult. This is an interesting year. This is my 14th month of being your mayor, which I said in the beginning how proud and happy I am. They moved the election cycle up three months, so petitioning for this year's elections started yesterday before yesterday. And instead of a September primary, we now have a June primary. So it's, and it all came as a bit of a surprise, there wasn't a lot of information sent out about it. I think I'm looking at some of these politicians, we're all still wondering about petitions and how to do this, and when's this gonna happen? So it's, it's very interesting. It's also very, you know, it's, as, I feel like I'm just getting my feet on the ground as being your mayor. You know, and immediately start deciding, all right, I'm starting running it. And, you know, listen, it's been the way like this forever in Hudson. It's just, you know, accelerating the election cycle's been a little different. But Bill, it is my goal to get into a four-year position. I think that, you know, there's very little, I can look at my own experience and say, okay, the first year, big learning experience, big learning curve. And additionally, because of the nature of a two-year job, you're looking at not only me, but City Hall potentially being populated by all new people. And even on the common council, nine of the 11 members are brand-new to the common council. You know, we have a treasurer that's been there for a couple of terms, and everybody else, and I thank God every day for Tracy, our city clerk, because she's the institutional memory of the history of the city of Hudson. So I go to her for, we go to her for so much. But yeah, I definitely will do my best to make that happen. It was tried years ago, and it did not pass. And I don't know why, I really wasn't there to know why or not. I think possibly the fair and equal that we all proudly did two years ago, which I think made a huge difference in this community, I think something like that would have an easier chance now happening. Yes, ma'am?
On that same, oh, my name's Hillary Hillman, I live in the First Ward. On the topic of the terms of yourself or the mayor's position and all of the alderperson's positions, I really think that if we're going to do this kind of referendum, I think that it has to be done next year. It can't be done in an election year of the...
I would try to do it 2020.
Well, whenever it is done. I do think that it would be very important to also stagger the alderpeople, so that there isn't another situation where we have all new alderpersons at the same time. It worked out all right, but I think it is very difficult, and I think that there, that every, all of them should be four-year terms, but we're gonna have to do a staggered start to that. And that, I really think that somebody should start putting this together soon. I think it can't be voted on on a year that you're on the, that any of them are on ballot.
No, 2020 is the year. This year is 2019, the election's...
Okay, right, right.
Yeah, 2020 would be...
Right, okay. So, I think it's not too soon to be talking really seriously about that. It's just my opinion, I think it would be better for the city.
No, I appreciate it, I think you're absolutely right.
I could just add, Carol Ostering, First Ward. Yeah, the city of Hudson used to have staggered aldermen terms, so that every two year, every year, two new, or one new alderman was elected for each.
Can everybody hear what we're talking about? Okay, I apologize, we're talking about the elected officials being a two-year or a four-year. Can you hear me okay? It's the questions you can hear? So maybe I will, I will hand this, and if people would stand up and, and, or I have a microphone here, you can use, I don't want to... All right, so I will hand the microphone to the question. Thank you, and I'll bring it back. So they're talking about, we're discussing, my goal is to, and it's only been the mayor, but I think every elected official could be up for conversation. I don't want to make it too complicated, because I want to make sure this passes. And I think one of the other reasons it didn't pass previously was because there was other things attached to it, that some people didn't like maybe, and that's how, how I've been told. But again, I don't have the bill, I don't, I don't have the actual, what they voted on. So the conversation was, this, this nice young woman mentioned that she thought all elected officials should be on a four-year versus a two-year election, and possibly staggering the common council alderpeople, so five ran one term and five ran the next term. So there would always be some sort of institutional knowledge on the stage. I get that, and I think that's part of the conversation. So, you know, I, I'm very serious about this, and I've been speaking about for some time. And you're right, Bill, and I wish I'd brought it tonight. Since my very first day in office, I have a big board on my, in my office, and it has a list of about 15 things. And it's something I look at every day. These are the 15 things I wanted to have happen in, as me being mayor. And some of them are being clipped off. Some of them decided were probably not gonna happen. Come on up and visit, and I'll show it to you. But it's, it's something that I'm always reminding what it is, and the four-year term, glad you caught that, Bill, is a big part of it. Any other questions?
Could I just, I just want to be here, Carol, Carol mentioned that there were staggered terms at one point?
Carol mentioned that there were staggered terms at one point, and she's gonna do it and then that's the end of it?
Yes, I did mention that there were staggered terms, and I don't know when it stopped, and I don't know why. But for example, you know, 100 years ago, 1919, a common council minutes that I looked at recently, it noted the new alderman that had been elected that year, and there was just one for each ward. So, it was, you know, it was, aldermen were elected every year, but half the aldermen were elected every year.
So that means the city had to actually have an election...
Every year, but...
Every year or every two years? Oh, thank you, yeah. That's, that's fine. Tom has a picture of the bulletin board in my office that I look at every day. And I'll just quickly go through this. 911, the county doesn't, couldn't do a much better job than the city can regarding 911 emergencies, and they're working on improving that. And that would just be a text message that there's an accident, there's...
Telephone?
On my telephone. I'm sorry. I thought I was speaking loud enough. Second is Parking Bureau. And that's been all changed, and I think it's a much better thing. Handicap access.
Wait, what was the second one?
Was redoing how we were handling the Parking Bureau. If you recall, that the Parking Bureau was outside of Tom's, in my office, and half of my day was spent telling people that I don't take their money for parking. And as much as I would like to, it's, yes, sir?
Barry Sax, might I ask though, now that you've mentioned the parking, I understand that there's been a change of enforcement in regards to two-hour parking on more...
This is, this is interesting, and I'm gonna get back to you. And I don't need to read this whole list, come to my office, go, "I'm impressed you have this, Tom." Watching me, huh? Giving me cannibals. Barry brought up the, this, this, I love a little town and how things happen. This was Saturday, and Saturday morning, I had a breakfast meeting with somebody, and I'm quickly going through the emails, and I see this thing on Facebook about, "City of Hudson has a new parking law." And this woman, I think, a person, individual, said they ran into one of our parking meter enforcement officers, who informed, they were having a nice conversation, and he very politely told her that the city of Hudson has a law that if you're parked in the same space for more than two hours, you'll be ticketed. And as everybody knows, city of Hudson has a two-hour limit, a lot of everybody may know this, but there is a two-hour limit on all parking meters, on Warren Street. The city lots are different, as many quarters of those, I think, as you want. But so this became one long thing on Facebook, "I can't believe the city's doing it, how dare they do this", based upon what one guy told a person, who immediately went on Facebook and said, "They're gonna start enforcing it." Now, our gentleman from the Parking Bureau had a conversation with the chief of police, who was over there, and he said, "Yeah, that's a city law, but we really don't enforce it." And that is a city law. And how historically they used to do it, they would walk up with chalk and mark cars, like they still do in some communities around the country. It's a very old-fashioned, old-school way of doing things. So, I was just, I mean, I kept going back, and my personal, I don't engage on Facebook, you know, it's, I read stuff, and I will try to call somebody to see if they wanted to correct something, if possible. But this turned into a little lively at some, you know, the city's really doing something bad, and there's all these tickets and all this news stuff. I caught, and I'm in with the chief of police and said, "What did you say, and did you say it to?" And he said, "Oh my God, really?" I said, "Yeah, really." So we all have to be very careful. And I think that guy actually wrote one ticket that day, and if anybody got that ticket, bring it to us, because we're not enforcing it. It is not a change in our policy, we're sticking with the old ways. I guess that someday, someone may say, "We will enforce that two-hour limit, and we do have specialists with the right color of chalk to tell..." I mean, that would be quite an, you know, I think, it'd be an interesting adventure to watch, but it ain't happening. And the police, the chief told me this week, "It's not going to happen, there's no, been no change." And the one ticket, again, if anybody knows that person, have to call, contact us, okay? So Barry, no, no change. Yes, ma'am?
If that's the case, then let's keep the law.
Don't disagree, I learned all about this this week. If she doesn't ask the case, change the law. Good point. Good point. Yes, ma'am?
Nikki Gennito, Fifth Ward. I have a question about what the city in the future plans to do about affordable housing, if anything. I work for the school district, and we have an incredibly large amount of children living in hotels, homeless, with other family members, because there's no affordable housing in Hudson. No, thank you. So I'm asking if there is a plan for affordable housing in the future in Hudson?
Well, I would say there's a specific plan for affordable housing. Affordable housing has been, I mean, I think, the major topic during the past year. And it really kind of started with the DRI, and people were upset that some of the DRI money was not being devoted towards affordable housing. So, at one point, Mayor Martin, in tandem with the DRI project, started a mayor's task force on housing. And that began the city, the city, because I'm not talking about the developers, that's another conversation that I'll bring up. But the city needed to establish some sort of strategy to deal with housing. And not just affordable housing, housing at all prices, because Hudson has an issue of housing at all prices, whether it's market rate or affordable, it is a big issue. People want to live in Hudson. Any successful community that people want to live in, we're having the same conversation. So, it's, some of it's good for Hudson, because people do want to be here. People want to be associated with the community. Now, we have, we have the Hudson Housing Authority. Their job is, you know, is predominate the public housing from the government. And they have put together a major proposal for additional, I think it's 175 units for affordable housing. Again, the city, it'll be too confusing here, but the city put together this, this program that was, I would say a strategic guideline, that all housing issues, whether it's fair market value, or affordable, or subsidized housing, be judged against. And I think it was incredibly important that we did it, it took a lot, it took months. A group of very hard-working, earnest people did this for the city. It was subsequently adapted by the common council as a guideline for the city to utilize for all housing projects. for all housing projects. So we now have private, the city doesn't build housing, but we encourage and work with developers, and we've done that. Galvin Foundation has announced 27 new units that they're currently building for affordable housing. That's not enough, but they certainly have the property and the wherewithal to do more. And I, you know, and I believe that they will start doing more. So we will be getting 27 new units from Galvin at subsidized or affordable housing rates. Additionally, as I mentioned, Hudson Housing Authority put together a very, very ambitious program that calls for 175 units right around Blue's Tower. Now, that in itself, and I've said it publicly, and I, you know, God bless him for Trump, but that's a bit in contradiction to what the City of Hudson came up with, because in our housing strategic plan, we said housing should be scattered throughout Hudson. Affordable housing should not just be in one geographical area, it should be scattered throughout the City of Hudson, something I personally strongly believe in, and many people I know, both in government and people that I talk to, believe in. We still have room for, you know, for more developers to come in for affordable housing, to build housing, you know, that is subsidized. I want everyone to recognize, you know, everything comes at a cost. So any new housing, or any new developer, including Galvin, or any other developer, wants something in return. And that something in return generally is some sort of a tax credit, or something that the city gets back. And I think that there's, most people in this town are willing to have that conversation with people if they want to come in and develop and build these houses, as long as it's fair and equitable for all partners. So the city doesn't build housing, but we will certainly support it, we'll certainly have conversations. We're working with Galvin, we're working with the Hudson Housing Authority. We've talked to, we've talked to a variety of other companies or developers that want to come into Hudson and build affordable housing. We're just waiting to see. You know, there's a big conversation about John L. Edwards. Is it right for the City of Hudson? It may be the perfect solution for the City of Hudson offices. It also might be a perfect solution for additional housing that some developer wants to do. I think it's a great question, Nikki, and I hear it, and it's something I hear and talk about every day. So it'll be, I can't be more interested in seeing what people are going to start coming forward once the city's made it known, yes, we're interested in talking to developers about affordable housing, our new housing. We'll see what happens. But we are getting new ones, and I know certainly this Galvin is a start, a big start, and we'll see what happens with the HHA. Any other questions about housing, because it's an incredibly important issue? Yes, sir?
It's recently kind of my attention that, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm John Darby from the third ward. I'm John Darby.
Close your to your mouth, John Darby from the third ward.
I'm John Darby from the third ward. I'm actually concerned about the number, like, I've just recently, I've only recently noticed that only 35% of the housing units in Hudson are owner occupied. Only 35% of the housing units in Hudson are owner occupied. In 65...
Only 35% of the houses in Hudson are owner occupied. And that's how you talk.
Okay. And in America, it's inverse of that. And I just wonder, in Columbia County, it's 73% owner occupied. And I just wonder, is there anything going on in the committees to address that, like, make, you know, tax incentives to allow people, make it easier for homeownership? Is anything being discussed about that?
That's a statistic that I'm not really totally familiar with. And, you know, I, it's probably...
I had it from the census.
I'm sorry?
It came from the U.S. Census report?
From 1999.
I was actually surprised it wasn't mentioned in strategic housing.
And it might have been, and I will get back to you about that. I've never had a conversation with somebody about that specific percentage or that, but I'm more than welcome to, John, now that I'm getting to know you. I'd like to continue this conversation if we can learn more about it. You know...
Is there any, are we doing anything about sort of regulating long-term rentals, since it's so, that number is so high, the units in Hudson? Like, are they long-term rentals registered, or the code enforcement, or is there anything around that happening?
No, there's been no conversation about long-term rentals.
Not any long-term rentals.
I know, versus short-term rentals. Did somebody say something?
They asked if it was short-term rentals that I was talking about.
There's plenty of conversation about short-term rentals in Hudson and everywhere else, again, where people want to live. And as far as long-term rentals, that's statistics that I'm sure are available, but we don't really discuss it much. You know, the rental market in Hudson's very tight, it's very robust. It's another major concern when you talk about affordable housing, because rents have gone, you know, gone up very high here. But I can't really give you, and I will see what I find out about long-term rentals. A bigger conversation, which we're all aware of, is more about the short-term rentals in Hudson. Again, that's the conversation about, we're talking about Airbnb's and other facilities like that, short-term, less than 30 days, I believe, is how you define that. And so, you know, there's no specific answer. We're looking at other communities, how they're dealing with their Airbnb's. It's a tough call, you know, to tell a property owner what they can or cannot do with their property. But it's also a very tough scenario when you look at neighborhoods in a community that have been taken over by developers, and they're kind of ghost towns during the week and on the weekends, or whatever town you live in, the weekend, the week, you know, it's full of people. So it's a big conversation that we're having here in the community. I, you know, we've talked about, I've talked about owner occupied Airbnb's, but that's philosophical. The huge challenge, you know, in any of this is enforcement. And, you know, and the city made a decision two, three years ago with, actually, John Friedman, I guess, may have left, I don't know where he is, but he was here earlier, he was a big proponent and a big help put this law together, the lodging tax, so at least we're getting some money from both short-term rentals and regular hotels and Airbnb's. But to my knowledge, there's not been much conversation about statistics with long-term rentals. But, you know, I think it's probably just as important as short-term.
Well, I think the, I think regulating long-term rentals is actually important, considering it's 65% of, that makes up 65% of the housing in Hudson. So that's just my two cents.
So are you talking about rent control, rent regulations?
Well, it's not rent regulation or...
Sit down, ladies. Thank you both for coming. I appreciate it.
Well, it just seems like with such a large number of units that are rentals, that it should be regulated in some way, at least starting with just registration, where the city would know how many long-term rentals there are?
You're registered.
Oh, they are registered. Yeah, we know. I just, I don't have those pizzies on my brain. It's something we don't talk about much. Oh, yeah, you own apartment, you have an apartment, you're building, the city knows about it.
More than that, a couple of years ago, you enacted a law that requires an annual inspection.
A couple of years ago, there was a law that requires an annual inspection. That's coming from our town judge, so I'm glad.
Also, there's a property office.
He's also owns properties, and... Anybody else? Yes, sir? Hang on, Bob, I'm coming back.
Just on a different note, and a positive note, I know it's been a thorn in the side that most mayors who live in the Northeast, but this year, that I've noticed over, I'm a longtime business owner, that the snow removal has been a very positive part of this DPW this year, because I've watched it. So, I know we haven't had the major snow storms, but it's always been a pain in the butt, especially in a morning business, to see what the snow is, what's, how's being removed. And I just have noticed this year's been better than most, so thank you.
Well, Bob, I thank you. And I might add, every day, to the workers of DPW, who make sure that, you know, that we're as good a shape as we are, and I've heard nothing but good, positive feedback. I've heard nothing but good, positive feedback from most of the citizens of Hudson regarding something. And there was a little change that we made. You know, we're doing a modified version of a snow emergency, but a little change, you know, as long as we can communicate, pardon me, as long as we've been able to communicate effectively to the citizens here, you know, we're very serious about it, we're going to get the streets clean. And, you know, DPW has done an admirable job, and Rob and the whole team there. And I will say, one of the, you know, I've talked about, one of the greatest joys of being mayor is being able to have, really working closely with the men and women of DPW, the men and women of our police force, and the men and women of our fire departments. These are the heroes of our community. So if you have something, you see something good about the city's streets in snow, or something, you know, a cop that's stopping and helping somebody, or a firefighter that's out there, you know, Bob, they're volunteers, you know, they're not getting paid. I just ask every one of you in the friendly city to take the time at some point to pat someone on the back and say, "Thank you." And especially the DPW right now, and our men and women of the police department and the fire department. They are one of yours, and they keep us alive. Yes, sir?
One department didn't mention the code enforcement. My sense is that Craig Hay and his guys are, I would say, overwhelmed with things, maybe not able to do as much as they'd like to do, for whatever reason. Would you agree with that?
Oh, I love the code enforcement, Craig's an old buddy of mine. But I think they do a very good job, you know, and we're asking a lot of them right now. And I'm always challenged, because I'm trying to find them a new facility in which to office out of, but we've thrown a few new things at them, so we may have to make sure that they have adequate staff in order to do it. Enforcement is difficult, and whether it's enforcement of a vacant tax law, vacant fine law that we just put through, to the lodging tax, to a fire inspection in everyone's business or home, they have a big job to do. And so I talk to Craig almost on a daily basis about, you know, how he's doing, what he's up to. And if you know Craig, he'll talk your head off and tell you everything. But no, Craig, I think Craig does a great job. I was just on the phone with him tonight for our game right here about an issue a citizen called me about. And he's available, he's out there, he works on weekends, he shows up. It's really good, you know, to have your code enforcement officer, and he's learned so much in six years. I remember when he was new, didn't really know much about, but he had 27-plus, I think, years' experience as fire code inspector, so, you know, he chops it, he's a fine man. So you see Craig, pat him on the back, too. Give him a special pinch on the butt. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Yes, Bill? Hang on, I'm going to do this.
I read that there was a law recently passed where buildings that are bought but not renovated are going to be fined. Is that being enforced?
It's just now starting. This was a law that was done last year, started out, and it's a, I think it's an overdue law. And we have, it is not being enforced yet, they're just now gearing up and wrapping their arms around the new law, and this will be the code enforcement office. But as you know, Hudson has a lot of vacant buildings. Now, all those vacant buildings may not necessarily be up for a fine, for a variety of reasons. If I own a building and I want to go away for three months, it's not really a vacant building, because I'm attached to it. But we do have buildings that have sat and nothing's happened to them, that are, but we do have buildings that are just laying there empty and decaying, and almost falling apart. So this is one opportunity that the city came up with, not, you know, yeah, there's revenue associated, it's not about the revenue, it's about getting these buildings up and going. And the more buildings, Nikki, that we can get up and going, the more housing. And I begged people, I said, "Please, get five buildings up each year and get us some new housing," because even if it's market rate housing on some of these structures that are currently empty, that begins to satisfy some of the lower rents, too. So, you know, the more availability is, the better the rents are going to be for everybody. So yes, that is a law. They will start, they're going to start enforcing it this year. Exactly when, I'm not sure, because again, they're just wrapping their arms around how they're going to be doing it. And again, that's through the code enforcement office that Bill said may be overtaxed. May I? Yes, sir.
Reverend Graham Peschilo...
He didn't need a microphone.
You indicated about the good job the other agencies are doing, and if we see them, we ought to commend them. I think it's a good opportunity also for us to commend you. You're making yourself accessible, and the venue that you're sitting up here does give us an opportunity to air certain concerns. And your office, which you've made available, I've yet to go up there, but you certainly told me your door's open. But, and regarding the housing and the developers, I think as we go forth, that we all recognize that there's a shortage. But we need to be mindful that many developers, if not all, certainly want to make money. I mean, that's why they develop. But at the same token, we need to be mindful, if we open total doors to their aspirations, it could be at times to the detriment of our community. So it has to be a balance there. I want a commend you for that, Nikki.
Oh, thank you, Reverend. What you just said is really at the heart of this, of the conversation about what's being proposed for some new housing in Hudson. And we have to be very careful, you know, that something doesn't get led by a developer. You know, make sure that the interests of, first of all, the citizens and the people potentially living there are being looked at, and not just a minimum fee for a very long term, and that it represents what's best for Hudson. So, you know, I'm not saying anything negative about any developer. I just think that, you know, we have to work with our potential developers in a way that suits our needs first and not their needs, because obviously, they ain't doing it for free, and, you know, they're in it for the money. And also knowing that developers are still going to come back to the City of Hudson and say, "What are you going to give me in a tax break?" Because nobody do anything for free, and they're out to make as much money as possible. Anybody else? Listen, I can't thank you enough, and I want everyone, please know that my office is open, you know, five days a week, I'm here every weekend. I encourage you, please, to stop by. I try as much as hard as I can to answer all my own phone calls, which some people just hang up, they hear that, but it's, to me, it's, you know, I want to engage as much as I can with the community. It is my, I ran a campaign on Hudson, and I haven't walked away from that. It's incredibly important to me. And this is not about a campaign, that's about how you govern. And, you know, I just hope every day that all of us elected officials look at, is this the best for the entire community? Is what we're talking about right? Because we can easily, in a town like Hudson, 6,000 people, it's very easy for a small group of people to often hijack a conversation or take over an issue. And, you know, the loud, what is the loud, Burge and State, whatever the old phrase is saying, you know, some of the louds, they can change the conversation, but not recognize that 75% of the community may not feel that way. So it's extremely important that we continue to just think, what is the best for the entire community? You know, it's, the five wards now are all equal size. Again, I think that was the greatest thing, I'm going to have to offer everybody who did that, because I did, I do think it has dramatically changed our community. And now it's like, what is best for all five wards? So if there are no more questions, I have... Yes, sir?
Last question. Which room will refreshments be served in?
Well, these tables turn into, the waiters are out there, we got cocktails right in through here. And then I have a half bottle of water, I'll give you a little. Thank you all very much. Thank you for letting me wait here, thank you.